Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
Councilman Lofgren.
Here.
And Mayor Crocker.
Here. If you would, please rise and join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right. Welcome, everyone. We will jump right into our agenda for the evening. We'll start with Item B1, Announcements and Reminders. Mr. Garza, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have several announcements this evening. I'll start by inviting the public for, to celebrate our Victoria Public Library launching its annual summer reading program at our Summer Fun Fest kickoff party at the library that'll take place on Saturday, May 31st, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Join us for a fantastic time with special guests from Chick-fil-A, Victoria Fire Department, Victoria Police Department, the Children's Discovery Museum of the Golden Crescent, and many more. On behalf of the Communications Department, the latest episode of Town Talk debuted today, featuring Victoria Public Library Director Jessica Berger. The library is celebrating 50 years of fun and learning in Victoria. In this episode, Jessica shares a sneak preview of the celebrations being planned. Plus, we swap reading lists and learn about future plans that are as riveting as any bestseller. I didn't write that. Additionally, our Economic Development Director, Daniel Williams, also returned to the city's podcast, Town Talk, to highlight major developments from Victoria's retail scene, which you'll learn about a little later. On this episode, we also educate residents about retail leakage, what it means, how it affects our economy, and how shopping locally can help keep sales tax dollars in Victoria. The episode also highlighted the latest efforts by major retailers who have helped fill vacant retail spaces across the city. Both episodes and more can be found on Spotify and YouTube, or by visiting victoriatx.gov/towntalk. On behalf of Municipal Court, the Texas A&amp;M Agri Life is hosting a car seat inspection event with the support of the Municipal Court on Wednesday, May 28th, from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. in the Target parking lot. Car seat safety technicians will be present to help families who are unsure if their child's car seat is correctly placed. Additionally, all non-emergency city Victoria offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th, in observance of Memorial Day. The Victoria Public Library will also be closed on the 26th. All garbage, recycling, and yard waste will be collected as normal, and offices will reopen at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, May 27th. Finally, I want to provide you an update regarding an effort by the Victoria Firefighters Association. The Victoria Firefighters Association presented a petition seeking adoption of the state law applicable to firefighters that establishes collective bargaining if a majority of the affected employees favor representation by an employee's association, preserves the prohibition against strikes and lockouts, and provides penalties for strikes and lockouts through the process outlined in Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 174, for submitting a petition to place the item on the ballot and the required ballot language. They also presented a petition seeking adoption of the firefighter and police officer civil service law for the Victoria Fire Department through a process outlined in Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 143, for submitting a petition to place this item on the ballot and the required ballot language. After verifying the required elements of petitions from Chapter 277 of the Texas Election Code and calculating the total number of qualified signatures per the applicable chapters of the Texas Local Government Code, that's the last time I say that, it was determined that both petitions met the requirements to have voters decide on the measures at an election on November 4th, 2025, which is the next uniform election date. The last day to order an election for that date is Monday, August 18th, 2025, and we plan on bringing this action item to you at the first regular meeting in August, which is on August 5th, 2025. And the Firefighters Association will be made aware of this this week as well, through an official correspondence. And those are all the announcements I have for this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Then we will move into B2, Public and Employee Recognitions. Do you have anything for us this evening?
I do have a couple of employee recognitions, and I believe they're both present, so I'm going to ask them to stand. But I first want to ask Zach Wendell to please stand. He's our Community Development Planner, and he recently earned his graduate certificate in Public Management from the Bush School of Government and Public Service at Texas A&amp;M University. So Zach, congratulations. Now I'm going to ask Keisha to rise. But Keisha Smith, who of course is with the City Manager's Office as our Special Projects Manager, earned her certificate with distinction from the Nonprofit Leadership Academy at the Nonprofit Center at UHB. And so, Keisha, congratulations for that as well. She sat down as quickly as she could.
I saw that. I saw that.
That's all I have for the.
Two, I have one. I think I hear through the grapevine today, maybe a employment anniversary for somebody?
Oh, that was yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
That close. All right. Well, happy anniversary, sir.
Thank you. Six years.
Six years. Right. Right.
We're glad that we've had you these six years and hope for many more.
Thank you likewise.
Great. Great. All right. So moving on then, Item B3, we have an administration of oath of office for three members of council, and I think Ms. Hilbert will handle that for us. Good, I'm going to pay attention.
You'll raise your right hand, sir, and repeat after me. Okay. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Mark Lofgren.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of office of Councilman District 6.
Of office of Councilman District 6.
For the City of Victoria.
For the City of Victoria.
And of the State of Texas.
And of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Andrew Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Councilman District 5.
Of the office of Councilman District 5.
For the City of Victoria.
For the City of Victoria.
And of the State of Texas.
And of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Ready to do this again?
Yes. This memorial is right now.
Yes, I do. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Dwayne Crocker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Mayor for the City of Victoria.
Of the office of Mayor for the City of Victoria.
And of the State of Texas.
And of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
No, no speeches. Now that we're all official again, so here we go. We'll jump in then to Item B3, and, I'm sorry, B4, Election of a Mayor Pro Tim. As you may recall, under the city charter, that each time we have a general election, then we're required to elect a Mayor Pro Tim. So that is the task before us tonight, and I will open the floor for any nominations of a Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Young.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was seconding also. No problem.
I've got a motion in two seconds. Are there any other nominations? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Councilman Young?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. No.
Yeah, I wasn't going to ask you if you want.
You didn't give me a chance.
No, sir. No. Congratulations. You've done a great job, and I know you will continue to do so.
Honored to continue to serve.
Very much, very much appreciated by all of us, I know.
Appreciate everybody's.
All right. So moving to Item B5, we have items from council. Is there anything this evening? All right. No items from council then. We will jump into B6, which is Citizens Communication. I have two cards, and I'll remind those coming forward to please keep your comments to three minutes. And my first card is from Steve Moses. Welcome, Mr. Moses.
Thank you very much for letting me be here. Honorable Members of the City Council, I stand before you not just a grieving widower, but a voice for justice. Nearly four years have passed since my beloved wife, Norma, died. A preventable tragedy. Norma, a woman of God, served the community for over 20 years. On August 26th, 2021, Victoria Police, including Sergeant Swanson, came to my home. Their actions led directly to Norma's wrongful death on September 28th, 2021. The police video shows my wife's daughter and her husband stealing all of my wife's property. My wife was abducted that day and taken to Wymer, Texas Nursing Home. There she contracted COVID-19 pneumonia. She was denied critical medical care. She suffered immensely, and I, her husband, have 15 years, and medical power of attorney was powerless. I have repeatedly brought this to your attention. You have the police video, you have the documentation, and the details of the lies of the Victoria Police Department, Internal Affairs, and the City Manager. Yet you have done nothing. My pleas have been ignored. I have proven at least five blatant civil and elder rights violations, which still have no answers. The personal cost is immeasurable. For nearly four years, I have lived with unspeakable sorrow. Every week, I visit my wife's grave, a constant reminder that I never spoke to her again after she was taken. My wife wanted to come home, but because of those sworn to protect us, she never did. The grief is a daily burden. I call this the George Floyd Civil Case of Victoria, Texas. Like George Floyd, my wife's life was tragically cut short. The officers involved in assisting and protecting them were complicit. I am demanding action. I am demanding the immediate termination of Sergeant Swanson and the Chief of Police. The other officer retired almost two years ago, but Swanson and the chief remain. I have taken this case public and exposing injustice nationwide. I will not allow others to suffer this. The nation must know. You, the council, have done nothing to hold the Chief of Police or Sergeant Swanson accountable. You have seen the proof, and you have turned a blind eye. You have the power to show this community and the nation that justice is real. How much longer will you ignore the George Floyd case of Victoria? How much longer will you protect those who fell thus? Norma Moses deserved better. I deserve better. The city deserves better, and the world is watching. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. The second card I have is from David Faskus. Welcome, Mr. Faskus.
Thank you, Mayor Crocker. Thank you, Council, for having me. It's an honor to be here. I wanted to come today and invite each of you, as well as Victorians, to a treasure that we have here in Victoria, which is the Victoria Bach Festival. We will, very soon, May 31st through June 6th, be celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Victoria Bach Festival, which has been a nationally acclaimed festival that has now been reoccurring for half of a century. We have over 17 concerts and events occurring, so I can't talk about each one of them. So rather than do that, I'd like to highlight a few of the initiatives that we will be expecting and to enjoy in about a couple of weeks now. We will, for the first time, be expanding geographically. Most of our concerts will be right here in Victoria, but we will have a favorite, which has been at the Presidio in Goliad, as well as, for the first time, we're expanding to Rockport at their art museum. So we're expecting some beautiful concerts there, as well as several here in Victoria. We're going to have our Emerging Artist Concert, which has boasted over 60 acclaimed musicians, many of which, through the years, have gone on to win Grammy Awards, national recognition, teach at universities, as well as make meaningful differences and impacts in their community. One success story to note is Ivan Trevino was an emerging artist from here in Victoria and now teaches at the University of Texas and is one of the most prolific percussion writers in the nation, born and bred right here in Victoria. A couple of the other events, we are going to have a world premiere of a symphony commissioned for the Victoria Bach Festival's 50th anniversary by a Grammy-nominated composer, Juan Pablo Contreras, and that will be on Friday, June 6th. As well as, we're right now in developing a beautiful monument that was underwritten and sponsored by the Cloyde and Ethelie Tracy Foundation, as well as over 100 different members of Victoria that we will be unveiling on June 6th. And we'd like to invite each of you to come and enjoy and be with us and celebrate the music of Bach and those inspired by him for this fabulous week of music. Again, it's going to be May 31st through June 6th. You can get more information and tickets online at victoriamachfestival.org, as well as on Facebook or Instagram. We would love to see each of you there.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And congratulations to Bach Festival for 50 years. That's a big milestone.
Thank you. Truly appreciate that.
Look forward to this year for sure.
Thank you. And we appreciate your support and the support of the City of Victoria, designating that week as Victoria Bach Festival Week. Very meaningful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Faskus. Appreciate it. All right. That is all the cards that I have, so we will close out Citizens Communication. We have no public hearings this evening, and we will jump into the consent agenda. Ms. Hilbert?
Yes, sir. Item D1 is the adoption amendments to the regular meeting held on May 6th, 2025, and the special meeting held on May 13th, 2025. Item D2 is an ordinance amending the Chapter 24 of the City Code for Victoria Fire Department Fees, and this item is on second and third reading. And Item D3 is a resolution accepting a donation from Gulf Bend Center for the purchase of a vehicle for the Victoria Police Department's mental health officers in the amount of $44,645.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Do I have any motions with respect to the consent agenda?
A motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. I see Mr. Tunnel in the audience, and I want to say thanks to Gulf Bend Center for this very generous donation and appreciate the partnership with you guys and look forward to moving that forward in the future. Very good. Thank you, sir. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Then we will jump to Item E1. Ms. Hilbert?
Item E1 is a resolution approving the purchase of nine Ford Explorer police interceptor utility vehicles from Salisbury 40 in the amount of $636,687.
And Mr. Welder is here to give the presentation, but we will get a single presentation for Items E1, 2, and 3. We'll just lump those in together, so.
And before he starts his presentation, I do want to briefly mention that this is a continuation of what you heard at the last meeting from Darryl Leesack as it relates to our attempt to try and get ahead of the line, if you will, with fleet vehicles. I don't want to steal his thunder, but I want to reiterate that for us, this was a very specific task of ours that we embarked on, beginning roughly five or six months ago, where we began trying to take a deep dive into the status of the fleet situation with both police and fire. And so what you're hearing today is a result of that deep dive effort that we embarked on several months ago that did bring to light certain issues that you'll learn about. But for us, this is very important, because it goes without saying that ensuring that our first responders have the best equipment, facilities, et cetera, as possible is a big, big priority for this administration, and I know it's a big priority for all of you, and this is another example of that. So, Roger?
Yes, thank you. It's good to see you all. Good evening.
Good to see you.
So this is a very short presentation, just a couple of slides, and we'll try to field any questions the best we can with the help of our team members at the public safety groups and finance. We'll just dive right in. Looking at police vehicles first, this is kind of a plan we've come up with to cover the next four or five years and hopefully further into the future. But trends on these police vehicles show that their life cycle is about four years. In four years' time, they're well over 100,000 miles on those vehicles, and they're at the end of life. So what has happened is due to supply chain issues, COVID, you name it, the car market has changed drastically. We are finding it difficult to get vehicles in a timely manner. Also, pricing has gone kind of through the roof. So there's a couple of reasons we want to sort of preemptively buy these vehicles. Mainly, those are to shorten the lead times. These vehicles will be funded in the fiscal year 26 budget. However, we need to preorder so that we get those in Q1 '26. The police fleet has 31 patrol-ready units in their fleet. That means that not all of those vehicles are used for frontline patrol, but they are equipped to do so. The ones that are not on frontline, there are some that are like a reserve unit and some that are being used in other instances where they need vehicles. But they need to have this quantity of vehicles so that if they do find themselves running short, they can rotate these vehicles into frontline service. We ordered eight vehicles that have all been received this year, which is 25% of the fleet. Took a long time to get those vehicles. It was about a two-year-long process. So those are eight brand-new vehicles on the street. What we're planning to do with these three action items, one of the three is to buy nine additional vehicles, which will be funded out of fiscal year 26 budget. By the time Q1 '26 comes, we will have those vehicles delivered and on the road. So over half of the fleet will be replaced at that time. On into the future, we plan to replace five, maybe, maybe more, but five at least vehicles every year to try to keep these vehicles on that four-year cycle. Lastly, we have attempted to lease these vehicles through our enterprise partnership. The model doesn't really work that well with the police vehicles. It's been, their use is too high. They don't offer a maintenance package for that specific vehicle type, because the pricing would be just outrageous. So it's something that we've had to sort of juggle between our maintenance contractor and enterprise at the same time. Also, the financing charges are getting a little bit exorbitant, and so we would, what we're projecting is saving about $12,000 per vehicle over the four-year life of that vehicle, eliminating those financing charges. So this will be a cash outlay of about $636,000. We'll move on to the fire fleet. We are looking at making a big push here. We have a total of eight ambulances in the fleet. One of the action items is to order four new ambulances funded in fiscal year 26. We have already ordered one that should be here very soon, so that would be five. Five of eight is going to give us more than half of the fleet new on the road. The three ambulances remain, still have three to five years left of life, perhaps a little bit more. But we'll be planning to replace those in years to come. Same with the pumpers. We're a total of six pumpers in the fleet. If the plan is to order three now to be received in '26, one has already been ordered, which will be here soon. That'll give us more than half of our pumper fleet new on the road. We're just running into issues with the fire fleet that have prompted us to make this move, specifically with Sidtons Martin being in town and having this higher level of maintenance. We're identifying issues on these older units that is starting to make us move in the direction of replacement, rather than making some of these repairs. There are some state regulations that do not allow fire apparatus to be on the road longer than 15 years in frontline service, and after that time, they can only be in reserve status for an additional five years. And so we're getting very close. Our average age of our fire apparatus fleet is 10 years, slightly over 10 years old, with the oldest being a 2009 model. So we're getting very close to kind of running out of road, so to speak. So these will be a lease through PNC Bank. It says $380,000 payment over 10 years, an option to pay off early. And the two remaining units do have several years of life left in them. And that does it. I hope.
That's a lot.
I hope that was informative and not too crazy, but we'll do our best to answer any questions you may have.
And I'll just briefly, Mayor, if I may, once again, just reiterate that this is something that you'll formally see as part of the fiscal year 2026 budget, similar to the message last month, or earlier in the month, I should say, where we talked about the recommendation for the pay program next year and how that's a historic investment in our employees with priority being public safety. This would be no different on the fleet side, right? And so you can expect to see a proposed budget for fiscal year 26 that is very aggressive towards public safety, both in pay, with the recommendation that came out of the committee, and also with this recommendation, and also with the recommendation that's going to come forward with fleet, as you're seeing here tonight.
Yes. Also, Wesley told me to mention, and I forgot, that we are also, another reason we're doing this is to lock in some of this pricing. These, but, you know, the things happening in the world right now, prices are, we don't know what's going to happen, and we've been warned by some of these vendors that if we don't move quickly, we will see some drastic increases in pricing. So these will let us lock those prices in.
And Wesley and Gilbert deserve a lot of credit for the financing and aspect of this. You know, similar to all the work that they put in to help figure out, you know, how to achieve the pay program recommendation without having to make any sacrifices, if you will. Same thing here, right? We're able to do this historic investment in fleet for public safety without any. Same thing here, right? We're able to do this historic investment in fleet for public safety without any major sacrifices, and so they deserve a lot of credit for their creativity and their ability to figure it out. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'm certainly glad to see us being proactive and trying to get ahead of problems we see coming in the future. So kudos to you guys for helping us do that. So any questions on these topics?
I had a question.
Sure.
On the nine vehicles for police, an average of $70,000, does that include the equipment package that we install after, like, the radio, those kinds of accessories in that price?
Yes, ma'am, it does. It includes everything except the radio, actually, the radio. We get the antennas and the wires and stuff. We actually, our radios are funded through a fund that IT manages. So our lovely IT manager has actually preemptively gotten us some.
He just demoted you, James.
Director, director, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay? Can't be responsible for everything that comes out of my mouth. But yeah, he got us a few units that we're able to send off to have installed in our new vehicles, and then we'll be rotating old radios out of the old cars into the new cars. They're very expensive. So we kind of keep a, what, inventory of those? Try to. But all the hard parts, the lights, the siren, the cage, all come lumped into that price for each vehicle.
And then maintenance, I know that we had had some challenges with the Explorers that we have in fleet currently. Maintenance for these will be in-house, will be out-of-house?
Yeah, so it's in-house, but it's a contractor, but they're our contractor. They only work for us, and they take care of our critical fleets. So it will be in-house with our in-house maintenance contractor.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah. Roger, what's lifespan on an ambulance? You talked about four years for police and about, you know, the timeline for the pumper trucks. What about an ambulance?
Right, yeah, so we have, we have a couple of, I think we have three ambulances now that are 2015-year models, and those I think are our reserves, and they're running right at 170,000 miles right now. So we're looking at, what, just under 10,000 or 20,000 miles per year? So what, we kind of have gotten away from like our fixed years, life cycles, but if I had to put a number on it, I'm going to say seven years is what would be appropriate for an ambulance, because at that point in time, they're starting to become obsolete as far as the parts for the bodies and stuff like that go. So you're just kind of on borrowed time after about seven years.
Yeah, just really briefly, I would say, and I'm not trying to correct you on the spot, but I think it's important to note that I do think that one of the contributing factors to having to order as many ambulances as we are is this reality that we're all reminded of anytime that a fire chief provides an annual report, which is this reality that the call volume on the EMS side just increases significantly year over year. And so this reality, we're facing a reality that this timeframe that an ambulance is basically good for continues to shrink day by day. And so I would say that the lifespan of an ambulance is probably more around the four- or five-year mark, just based off of the reality of the demand that the vehicle takes place. Keep in mind, too, that ambulances respond throughout the entire county as well. And so the mileage that gets put on ambulances also has a contributing factor that geographically they have a pretty large response area. But, so I say that to convey that the replacement of an ambulance and a police car are beginning to basically almost become the same timeframe-wise. It didn't used to be, but it's becoming that slowly but surely.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for the information, appreciate it. With that, then, I will entertain any motions with respect to Item E1.
Move to approve Item E1.
My second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? E1 passes. Move to Item E2. Ms. Hilbert?
Item E2 is a resolution approving a 10-year lease purchase with PNC Bank for three Pierce Sabre pumpers for $380,943 per year from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group LLC for a total cost of $3,809,430.
I'll entertain any motions on Item E2.
Motion to approve Item E2.
Good, I've got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? E2 passes, and Item E3.
Item E3 is a resolution approving the purchase of four Braun Ford F-450 Type I ambulances for $1854,628 from Sidtons Martin Emergency Group LLC.
Any motions with respect to Item E3?
Motion to approve Item E3.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E3 passes. Again, thanks to all for your work on this. I think it made a big difference in helping us stay ahead of some issues that are potentially down the road, so thank you all very much. We'll move on then to Item E4.
Item E4 is a resolution approving an economic development program under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code and authorizing the city manager to enter into an economic development agreement with Victoria Exchange Development LP for retail development and infrastructure improvements not to exceed $1,500,000.
Welcome, Ms. Williams.
All right, good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for entertaining this presentation. I'm going to briefly go over the Victoria Exchange Development Agreement. It is a 380 chapter agreement between the city and Victoria Exchange Development Group. High-level project overview, of course, Victoria Exchange Development. It's located at 9,009 North Navarro Street. The total private investment from the developer is $25 million. Retail space is about 90,000 square foot, and it'll be built in two phases. And it will also include infrastructure improvements to Broadmoor Street with roadway and utility improvements. I added in a couple of conceptual drawings as provided by the developer to kind of give a feel for what it will look like. And here is also a site plan of the development. Phase one will consist of Burlington five below Ulta, and the next two spaces next to Ulta and the 9,000, 11,000 square foot. And then phase two will be the retail strip of about 35,000 square foot right next to it as well, along with the road infrastructure going with phase one. So the developer must complete phase one construction, about 40,000 square foot of retail space, and that construction has already began. Phase two construction is about 50,000 square foot, and the Broadmoor improvements to begin in August of this year, so later this fall. The city will provide a $1 million reimbursement for the road infrastructure improvements. Once the road has been completed, paid by the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation, and then the city will also provide a sales tax rebate to the developer after phase two completion, paid by the sales tax, annual tax collections. The rebate will be equal to lesser 50% of the city portion of sales tax generated by the developer campus within the first five years, up to a maximum of $500,000. And that's where we get the total $1.5 million. I do have the developer here with me tonight. If you have any questions, Asif Mautaz is here with me. But that was a very high-level overview of the agreement. Do you all have any questions for us?
I know we've all seen this agreement and discussed the terms. Are there any questions at this time? None here. No, okay. Do you'd like to say anything or add anything? Yes, please.
I just want to thank everyone from City of Victoria. Y'all have been awesome to work with. I've been working with the departments across the board, and it's been a wonderful experience to do projects in Victoria, and we look forward to doing more work here.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We appreciate y'all's working with us and the partnership there, and wish you the best of luck on your construction and future development. We're excited about it. Yeah, great to have you. All right, then I will entertain any motions with respect to Item E4.
A move we adopt.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E4 passes, and we will jump into Section F, City Manager Reports. Mr. Garza?
We have one report for you this evening that I will turn over to Wesley to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a report on the completion of our annual financial audit for the year ending September 30, 2024. Harrison Waldrop and Usherick performed the audit. We've posted a copy of the report to our website and have sent it out to the appropriate agencies this month to comply with all of our filing requirements. Melissa Terry is here with HWU, and she's going to provide an overview of the audit process and some highlights of the report.
Good evening, Ms. Terry. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Wesley. Yes, my name is Melissa Terry. I'm a CPA and a partner with the firm of Harrison Waldrop and Usherick. We're here from Victoria, here to let y'all know that we have completed the audit for the city's fiscal year in September 30, 2024. As y'all may have seen on the website, and before I begin, if y'all have any questions now, I'll, you know, entertain y'all's questions now, or we can wait until the completion of my presentation.
Any questions?
No questions.
Nope, okay, please appreciate, thanks.
All right. Like I said, you know, I can't do this all by myself. So the engagement team consists of myself, our audit supervisor, Elizabeth Menorden, and other staff within our office work on the audit. Elizabeth and myself work almost strictly on governmental accounting auditing engagements almost throughout the entire year, all types of audits, municipalities, counties, special districts, school districts, et cetera. We receive the required number of continuing education hours every year. And as the city is required to have an audit every year, our firm also has to have an audit on ourselves, and every three years, we have to have an audit in which they refer to as a peer review. This peer review consists of a review of our quality control standards in the firm, as well as the services we perform and the product that we produce to ensure that we meet the required standards. Our last review was performed for 2023. An audit engagement lasts for the City of Victoria almost 12 months. At the completion of this presentation, over the next couple of months, we will issue an engagement letter for our services for the 2025 audit. After the acceptance of the engagement letter, we begin the audit planning process. Then after planning is performed, the audit procedures are performed. Audit procedures last about a span of five months. We come in in the month of September, and we try to conclude our audit procedures, our fieldwork procedures. We're not here the whole time, or in the city's offices the whole time, but through the month of January into February. And at that time, we start preparing the annual comprehensive financial report of the city. They also refer to that as the ACFER. We issued our opinion letters on April 21, 2025, just shy of a month ago, as you see. From this period until the planning begins for the next year's audit, we discuss any new GASB pronouncements that may come out, or any other issues that may arise. And so we're in constant communication. That's why I say it's about, it's an annual thing. You know, we're not, we don't go anywhere, you know, we're just a phone call and an email away to answer any kind of questions or provide any guidance for Wesley and his staff. As mentioned on the previous slide, we were able to issue our opinion letters on April 21, 2025. The city received an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, and this is the same form of opinion that the city has received in the past years. There were no findings noted in our review of the city's internal control over financial reporting. The city once again has completed an annual comprehensive financial report, or an ACFER, which will be submitted to the GFOA for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The city has received this certificate for 40 consecutive years and should be commended on this achievement. A couple of things to note about the independent auditor's report or opinion letter, which is, which can be found on page one of the ACFER, is that the financial statements remain the responsibility of the city. And our responsibility is to express opinions on the financial statements about whether they are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with the U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Other auditor communications include that there were no fraud or irregularities or illegal acts noted, or no material weaknesses in internal controls noted. One of the most important questions that you may all receive of the city's finances is, is the city better off or worse off as a result of the 2024 fiscal year? A great place for the users of the financial statements, or y'all, to find the answer to this question is in the management's discussion analysis, or also referred to as the MDNA. The MDNA is located on pages four through 22 of the city's report. Again, this is, the primary purpose is to provide the users of the financial statements with a narrative overview and analysis of the city's financial position as a fiscal year end, and the results of the operations of the city. When I go over, you know, reports with, you know, all types of entities, I always refer to this section. It's the most informative, it provides lots of information. And again, it contains the audited information, the financial statement information on a comparative format. But then the management finance office does put a lot of information in there to just elaborate on why things happen, you know, what y'all are, you know, the major projects that are in progress, because you don't find that in a financial statement. You don't find that in the notes to the financial statements. This is where you can, you know, it's more similar to maybe y'all's, the budget, where it goes into talking about how many, you know, numbers of fleet were purchased, and the fleet was increased, or, you know, y'all had big dispositions of assets, or y'all issued debt, and just describing in more, it's just more informative, as well as talking about the next fiscal year, the 2026, well, actually, in the 24, you're talking about the 25 fiscal year and beyond. You know, what's up and coming, and so bond rating agencies and such, that's the purpose of the management's discussion and analysis, for them to read what's happening in Victoria, Texas. The next few slides that I'm going to go over, we'll hit the highlights on the three major funds of the city. We're going to talk about the general fund, the wastewater fund, and the environmental services fund. Just to point out, the net position that's presented for the water fund and the environmental services fund will not agree to what y'all see in the city's budget, y'all see the working capital. And as described in the note on this slide, that the differences between working capital and the net position are the way capital outlay is recorded, the recognition of a pension and OPEB liabilities, the accounting for leases and subscriptions, as well as long-term compensated absences. The general fund's fund balance for fiscal year 24 increased 1.5 million, and that was due to revenues coming in over budget and expenditures in simple terms, and expenditures coming in under budget. I know that's in simple form. You can see the detail by department in the ACFER, as well as then refer back to the MDNA, where we go into a little bit more detail and describe more specifically by, maybe on some department levels and what happened, you know, you know, whether it's personnel, or capital outlay, or, you know. Mainly, the variances across departments are a outlay, or, you know, mainly the variances across departments or across funds for big swings in the expenditures or one-time purchases, you know, such as the purchases of the public safety equipment that y'all were just approving. Those type of things do come through, and that's described in the MDNA. The water fund's net position increased 139,000 for fiscal year 24, and the environmental services fund saw a decrease of 537,000 in fiscal year 24. Sorry. The total general fund fund balance at 93024 was 24.8 million. This was an increase, as mentioned before, of 1.5 million from fiscal year 23, from 23, so 23.3 million up to 24.8 million. Of the total fund balance, 900,000 has been designated for carryover purchase orders into fiscal year 25. So the undesignated portion of the year-end fund balance is 23.9 million. This, this financial highlight, this graph presents the working capital I've seen in the city's budget documents. And as mentioned before, this working capital differs from the net position, as you'll see in the ACFER. And the net position of the water fund at 93024 was 99 million. This graph shows that the working capital was 16 million, which is a little slight decrease from fiscal year 23. And then the net position of the environmental services fund at 93024 was 7 million, comparative working capital of 11 million. To highlight some of the major revenue sources for this city, this graph portrays these. We'll discuss the property taxes, sales tax, franchise tax, and then the water fund operating revenues and the environmental services fund's revenues. The property tax, the portion in the graph here just depicts, the general fund does not report on the INS collections. For property tax collections for fiscal year 24 was 19.2 million compared to 18.6 million in the previous fiscal year. Sales tax revenues had a slight decrease from 20.4 million down to 19.9 million. Franchise tax was 5.8 million compared to 6 million in the previous year. Water fund operating revenues were 26.4 million compared to 26.6. And then environmental services fund operating revenues were 6.2, which were consistent, about consistent with the previous fiscal year. This graph portrays the three major funds expenditures slash expenses compared to the previous years. And just to note, again, the primary reasons for any variances are for one-time expenditures, expenses, and just your overall increase in cost. General fund fiscal year 24 expenditures did increase from fiscal year 23, from 51.7 up to 53.4 million, and the water fund expenses 24.5 compared to 23 of 21.2. Environmental services fund fiscal year 24 expenses increased 400,000 from 6 million up to 6.4 million. Because the city expended greater than 750,000 in federal and state grant awards, y'all were required to have a single audit on federal and state expenditures for fiscal year 24. The opinion letter on this, on the city's compliance can be found on 264 of the report, and there were no compliance issues nor any deficiencies in internal control over compliance noted in that opinion letter. Additional communications that we are required to have at the completion of the audit, very similar to our communication with y'all at the beginning of the audit, like the engagement letter, we're required to make any notes of any significant matters just to point out to y'all. Some of the, one of the items is significant estimates, and we're required to make note of any significant estimates that are embodied in the financial statements. And those include that there were no contingent liabilities on any relating to compliance in federal or state grants, the estimation of useful lives, and the depreciation calculations of capital assets, the various allowance for uncollectible balances that we do estimate throughout the financials, and then the calculations of the net pension and OPEB liability account calculations that are performed. We encountered no significant difficulties during the audit. There was no independence issues noted, and there were no uncorrected misstatements to report. Also, the city was required to adopt a new GASB statement this year, which was GASB Statement 100, which was the Accounting Changes and Error Corrections, which is an amendment to GASB Statement Number 62, but that had no impact on the city's financial statements for fiscal year 24. That concludes my presentation. Really brief overview of the audit process, really quick overview of the city's financial statements. As y'all see, it's a very, y'all don't, the city does not print the copy anymore, but it's a, it's a big book, you know? So I know it takes a long time to go through it, but as you make your way through it during, you know, over the weekend, just feel free to give me a holler. You know, I'll be glad to answer any questions. But I appreciate Wesley and all his staff and their time and cooperation during the audit, and I appreciate doing the audit for the City of Victoria. Any questions?
Are there any questions at this time? Thank you so much for the information. We appreciate the report, and Wesley Gilbert and your team, thank you for, where'd Wesley go? Yes, thanks for all your work on this, and good job, guys. Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
All right. Mr. Garza, is anything else under City Manager Reports this evening?
No, sir.
And I understand we do not have an executive session, is that correct?
Correct, no.
All right, then we are adjourned at 5:56.